Called order of the Board of County Commissioners, special meeting. Welcome, everybody. Please join us in the pledge of allegiance and salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This is the flag of the state of New Mexico, the zealous symbol of perfect friendship among the United Nations.
First item on the agenda is approval of the special meeting agenda. John, is there anything that needs to be changed on this agenda?
Not that I know of, Mr. Chairman. Oh, hang on. Sorry. The resolution number for 13-51 is actually 13-53. Sorry about that.
We're -- there's a request to change item six from resolution R.1351 to resolution R.1353. I assume that's just a typo?
Yeah, the resolution didn't change. We just had a wrong number on the resolution.
Is there anything else that needs to be changed on the agenda? Seeing none? Can I get an approval of the agenda?
Motion to approve special meeting agenda.
My second. Motion is second to approve the special meeting agenda. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify and say an aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Item four, approve or disapprove fiscal year 2014 final budget. John, you want to go through that because I think there's about three parts to that that we need to talk about.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. You have your budget book where we've added in the final budget, and then you have a green folder that is the fourth quarter report and the budget adjustments. This year, the DFA has changed that instead of just approving a final budget, the commission is required now to approve the fourth quarter report, the budget adjustments for the year end, and the budget altogether, and send it up to them. So that's why we have these three pieces in front of you. The quarterly report is this first sheet in the green folder, and all that is, is showing the fund breakdown that's required by DFA that shows the different funds that we have, the beginning cash balance, the revenues year-to-date, transfers year-to-date, expenditures year-to-date, our ending cash balance, shows the required reserve column and that we've met the required reserves in the two funds that are required to have them. So that's all that that report is doing and showing you those balances, and it shows that our balances meet the requirements of the state. The next item in the green folder is the resolution for the budget adjustments, and what that is, is Ms. Vasquez, our finance -- the director of our finances, she goes through and looks at the funds at the end of the year and makes adjustments in the funds to get them in, makes the final year-end transfers to bring those departments, like the road department and the corrections department, up to balance because they get revenues directly into them, but whatever revenues they lack, we move from the general fund down to them to make them whole and balance their budgets. And so that's what these transfers are. That first section is the cash transfers out of the general fund into the different departments to set up those accounts and bring them back whole. The next one is some transfers within the different departments. We've moving from the contractual services line item in the commission's budget down into offset some additional costs we had in utilities, fuel, and then the road department fleet budget. Then on the back page, it's just the increased revenues and the different types of grants that we have throughout the year when we get the receipts to set up those budgets because at the beginning of the year, what we do is we just carry those monies over, and as they spend, at the end of the year, we offset those and adjust those for the receipts they've received and set up the carryover balance to the next year. And so those are setting up in the fire protection fund, senior services, the detention fund, and the capital projects funds that are the road projects, the cap projects, the bus terminal, Gila River stabilization, and the fair livestock building. And so that's what this budget adjustment does, is get those in line to finish out 2013 and get us prepared for fiscal year 2014.
Is everything in the green folder considered to be resolution 1355?
Everything in the green folder and your blue binder for the budget? No. Originally, we had put a resolution number on it, but it is all part of the number -- the line item in the commission approved final budget because it's required by DFA to all be put together. So it is all part of approval of the final budget because DFA will not accept the final budget without these two other documents with it. And so we're doing it as one package to you as approval.
So this is no longer a resolution?
It's no longer -- it's a resolution with -- it's -- yes. It's no longer resolution 1355. We numbered it, but it's now part of that budget, final budget.
Under four.
Mm-hmm. That's the item because this is all -- one of these can't be done without the other in DFA's.
Right. I just want to make sure when we make the motion that everybody is in complete agreeing that it includes the quarterly report.
The budget adjustments.
The budget adjustments.
And the final budget. Yeah, the motion to approve the final budget will include these three items because that's what DFA has changed.
And the final budget. I just want to make sure nobody thinks pulling wool over their eyes or anything.
Yeah, in the past, last year, each one of these items, the quarterly reports never had to come in front of the commission. They were just sent to DFA, and the budget resolutions were done to the commission as we needed them throughout the year. DFA changed it this year as the first year it's in place where they are requiring us with the final budget approval to add these two items, so it's all going in front of the commission for your viewing as the final budget approval. And that's why the change.
Okay.
On the budget, the only thing that we've changed from the preliminary budget to this final budget is we have gone in and adjusted the wages as negotiated with the union. We've adjusted those wages of non-union employees, non-union represented positions in accordance with the resolution that we have on the books. It says all employees of the county get whatever's negotiated into the union through the union contract. So we've made those adjustments, and then we've adjusted the PILT payment from 1/4 to 1/7 to be closer to what the actual numbers are on that. And so those are the adjustments that we've made from preliminary to final.
Does the budget represent 3/12ths reserve?
Yes, it does. It covers the 3/12ths reserve, and I believe it's about $110,000 above the 3/12ths reserve. So it meets all the statutory requirements that are put on the county. So there is a 3/12ths reserve there. There is a 1/12th reserve in the road department, and those are the two required departments that have reserves in them. All the others are fed from the general fund, such as corrections, everything else.
What was the amount above the 3/12ths?
I believe it was $110,000.
$110?
Yes, sir. And so those are the -- that's the changes in the quarterly and that. If you have any other questions, I can answer them, but everything else remained the same as the preliminary budget. We have not changed our insurance. We have made the adjustment in the budget, I guess, for the PERA, the resolution that the commissioners just did. We did increase the percentage that PERA is based on that resolution where you approved us to pay another 75 percent of that percent and a half increase for the employees that you did on last meeting. That has been adjusted in here and accounted for as well. So.
Okay. Any other questions on the budget? No. I think this is the third time we've gone over it with a few changes, so I think it's a good budget. The $110,000 is a beginning to moving towards our 5/12ths that we're going to have in the next couple of years because we're not going to be like the rest of the counties in the state when they're all broke and not able to serve their public. We're going to have cash in the bank.
And I've spoke with my finance director, Lynda Vasquez, this morning as we were putting this package together for you, and one of the pushes we're going to have with our directors is we're going to make sure that everybody is really watching their expenses, and even though we've given them those budgets, it doesn't mean you can go out and spend everything you got in there. We need to justify how we're spending our monies, and we're going to try and be as frugal as we can on the budgets. The departments have done a really good job. You know, we do have those unforeseen things where we've got to go and buy air conditioners because they break in the middle of summertime and can't put them off, but everybody does a really good job, and we're just going to make sure that everybody's still doing that, not just spending money, that we're going to still be frugal and try and save and not spend 100 percent of our budget.
Okay. Anything else?
Well, just as a county commissioner, I think our biggest job is to make sure that our budget is sound, and appreciate all the hard work you've been doing. Please relay that message to Ms. Vasquez.
Yeah, she does.
I know they work real well. Y'all work well together, and we appreciate it. I know that's one of our biggest jobs, and I'm glad that all three of us have really been looking at all changes.
Okay. Get a motion to approve.
I'd like to make the motion that we approve the quarterly report, the budget adjustments, and the final budget for 2014.
I would second that. There's a motion and a proper second to approve the fiscal year 2014 final budget, including the quarterly report, the budget adjustments, and the final budget. Is there any discussion on that motion? Yes, sir, Mr. Baldwin. You were hiding down there. I didn't almost see you.
James Baldwin, county resident. How much was the PILT fund for this year? It was 114, 118?
The PILT payment that Grant County received was $1,800,000 and I believe $37,000.
Thank you. Secondly, quite recently, money was donated from the commissioners' discretionary funds to a group in the county. What is the amount of each commissioner's discretionary fund?
The commission does not donate. We pay for services, and the commissioners each have $50,000 in a discretionary for professional They're used for things as offsetting engineering costs. We've bought playground equipment for the parks we own, air conditioners on our buildings. It's used for different items that aren't normally budgeted that the commissioners wish to do to our buildings, and then professional services are paid for with.
And is this an annual amount of 50,000?
Yes, sir.
All right. How is it accounted for?
It's just like all of our other purchases, the commissioners. If in the event we're looking at air conditioners, we have to go out and get the quotes or go out for bid, and then it goes through our procurement process. It's just like any other purchase. It's controlled through my office and with the commissioners.
You have listed on other agenda items in other meetings where you have expenditures. How is this money accounted for to the public? How do I know how much money my commissioner, District III, or someone in District I or District II knows how much their commissioner is spending and what the money is being spent for? In other words, transparency and accountability.
It's reported in the expenditure listing under their fund. It's listed under a separate fund and line item in our budgets, and as well as it's accounted for that way, the bills are paid out of that. So under our expenditure report, the line item that that is under is 40101, and I can't remember the exact account number. It would list if any checks were cut out of there, and it says what they are for. So everything is detailed, what it is for. It goes through the AP department if a check is paid for, which is most of them. They're done through a check through AP, and so it's accounted for that way and accounted for on the expenditure report in its own line item.
But how does the public ever find out?
If they're concerned, they can ask, and we'll answer that question. We don't go into detail on the expenditures. We go over the major expenditure items when we're in a commission meeting, and that document is a public document, and we can tell them that account number so they can see it.
For instance, whenever we did the batting cages over at Baton Park, I actually came out in a public meeting and told everyone what we're using that money for.
So I think he's in specific, he's speaking of the advertising money we gave to the Chicano Music Festival, and that was done in a public meeting.
So it can be asked for. If the public asks for it, we can give it. We can give a hard copy to them. It's recorded in the clerk's office as part of the meeting packet, the expenditure list. We have no problems giving it, and it is accounted for. I just people have never asked for it.
And it would be a public document because it's public money. Public funding.
Yes, sir. It's part of every meeting packet that we have an expenditure list. The clerk has it recorded with the meeting packet in his office for the public viewing.
You have your budget in front of you, Commissioners. How much money, how much revenue did the convention center generate this past fiscal year?
The -- civic center rents, including ACE hardware and the events.
No, the ACE hardware is $110,000, as I recall. Is that correct?
Well, total rent, including ACE, and all the rents and deposits that came in for the conference center was $177,000. 177, 177, 65, to be exact.
And so if ACE hardware generated, as I recall, $110,000, this would leave about $67,000 from the convention center proceeds.
Their contract has grown since we originally bought the property. I think they're closer to 125 or something like that now.
Okay, fine. Thank you for correcting me on that. How much more money could the convention center have generated had there not been disparity between the county employees and the bulk of the citizens in Grant County? Specifically, and I've brought this up before, it was written up as a letter to the editor in the newspaper about the county employees being able to rent the facilities for 10 percent of what the public pays. I would rent the convention center for $600. County employees would rent it for a mere $60. Yet they would have the same obligations as I would, which is understandable. But how much more money could have been generated had there been equity toward the public?
We don't track that separately. We'd have to look at it, but I sign off on all the rental agreements, and I don't recall seeing -- the majority of it is public. It's very few county employees compared to what the public renting it is. I would have to look at it. I couldn't tell you a number, but just recalling the ones I've signed, majority of them are outside public, and we don't have a bunch of employees that rent the whole facility or rent the facility. It's majority public, so I don't know that it would generate a lot more.
The Baton Center, on several occasions, has been rented out to county employees for weddings, graduations, things like this at the same discount as the --
No, it's not the same discount. Baton does not get a discount.
It is not?
No. Baton Park does not. The only facilities are the conference center and the fair building out at the fairgrounds.
Good. Thank you. I'm glad to hear that.
I'd also like to mention, over those $177,000, our facility was closed for, what, 70 percent of the year?
Yeah. I don't like to bring that up, but thanks, yeah.
Well, yeah. It was shut down.
Thanks for bringing the beating back up there.
No, yeah, it did. We got it closed for close to seven months. We didn't have -- we had only minimal events in there.
How much revenue does the daycare center generate?
We do not operate the daycare center. That's a building Grant County owns and through a lease agreement that was provided by a previous commission, not this commission in standing. It is -- the rent is being offset by services being provided to the community, which is a legal thing to do under CWG and the DFA guidelines for the state.
And about what would you estimate, Mr. Sari, the offset to be?
The rent in the agreement is $24,900.
And the revenue generated by the 2610 North Silver Street office complex?
Those are all government offices in there. We get 12 -- I think it's $12,000 a year from dispatch, and we get some money from the FAA. I'm not sure what that one is, and the rest are either county offices or state health department that we do not charge rent where required to give them space by law. And so it's similar to district court. I don't get to charge the judges anything to be in the courthouse.
All right, fine. Last year in August, pardon, in 2011, in August, as I recall, Mr. Sari, you indicated that the county would be carrying now 100 percent of the union contracts, health insurance, going from 80 to 100. This was after the budget was approved. How much money did that cost the public?
It was -- yeah, we did it. The unit contract was done before the budget was approved, the final budget. So it was budgeted in. At that time, we figured that that would be roughly around $300,000. The employees got no raise for four years, I believe, in return for that, so it equates to maybe a percent a year in raise to those employees.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Is there any other discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, 65 saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Approve or disapprove agreement number A.1319 that bargaining unit contract with the American Federation of State, County, Municipal Employees, Council 18, Local 2516. John, do you have anything to go over on that?
We've given you in your packets a copy of the current contract because this one hasn't been approved yet, so I guess it was a current contract that the expiration date was June 30th of 2013, and we've also given you the tentative agreements. What the tentative agreements are is the agreements that we've come to with the union bargaining group and we've -- the articles that they go with, the different -- so.
Non-employees get everything that union employees get?
Yeah. Financial, okay.
Just clear that up.
Okay. And so you have in your packet the different TAs that have gone back and forth. I don't know if you want me to go over every one. If you've looked at them, we've emailed them out to you so that you can look at them.
This is the same as the one that we received.
Yes. It's the same thing that Ms. Robinson emailed out to you.
Right.
This -- the steps that we follow is once we finish negotiations and we finish TA-ing on the articles, then the union takes it back, the negotiating team, and then they help meeting to ratify the contract with their members. I spoke with the union president yesterday, Monday, yesterday? Can't remember what day it was.
Monday.
Monday. He came by and met with us and let us know that the contract had been ratified by the membership and that it was ready to present to the commission. I've also spoke to Ms. Connie Durr, who is the executive director for ASME Council 18, which she sent me an email saying that she is confirming the ratification vote by the membership of the Local 2516 for the recently negotiated contract. ASME expects a vote of approval from the Grant County Commission. The hard work and effort by both the local union and the administration of Grant County at the bargaining table is evident in this contract. Sincerely, Connie Durr, Executive Director, ASME Council 18. So that's -- we've done those steps, and now we've presented it back to the commission. The wage increases that are built into these TAs have been built into the final budget. Any adjustments that are required have been built into the final budget. Everything is budgeted, so if the commission chooses to ratify following the ratification of the union, it's all covered under the current. It won't cause any escalation in our budget that isn't already accounted for, so that 3/12ths reserve is still covered, and the $100, $110,000 above the 3/12ths is still there. It doesn't affect that. That's already been accounted for.
Would it be -- don't let me ask something that I can't ask, because I know there's a lot of things you can't ask about negotiations, but would it be proper to ask who was on the negotiating team?
I think that's fine.
So for the county, it was myself, Ms. Robinson, and the sheriff. On the union side, it was the union president, Manny Malgano, the vice president, Albert Davalos, and Mike's title is treasurer, secretary?
Nothing.
Nothing, just a member? And then Mike Burns is a union member.
Okay.
That was their side. And then they also brought in two detention center officers at one point in time just to give a presentation to us. They weren't part of the negotiations. They just wanted to present something to management during that time, and then they left, and then we talked about negotiations again.
Is there any questions of John?
No. Not at all. Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
Motion to approve agreement number A.191319, the bargaining unit contract with the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, Council 18, Local 2516.
I'll take it for discussion purposes.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve agreement number A.1319. This is the bargaining unit contract with the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, Council 18, Local 2516. At this time, is there any discussion on this motion? One at a time, and Jody, you're first. Your hand was up first.
You can set it down if you're not telling Jody. I think that'll work. Good afternoon, Chairman, members of the board. My name is Jody Penya Osment, ASME, Local 2516, road department shop steward. On behalf of the blue collar, white collar, I am here to ask that you please not approve and sign the ASME Local 2516 bargaining contract. My reasoning and the members as I'm representing, during the meeting that we had for on July 15th to ratify the contract, we were blindsided by the union president, and since that meeting, he has not made himself available to us to discuss the issues that we are concerned about. At this time, there is air suspicion. There is not two consenting parties. Hopefully, if you agree, hopefully after we meet with the union president and all is agreed, he can ask to put this bargaining contract back on the table with you, the commission, for approval and signature. At this time, we thank you for your time and your consideration. Respectfully, Local 2516 union members.
Thank you very much, Jody. Let her sit down. Yes, John?
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to let you know when I spoke with Ms. Durr, I asked the question if the commission would choose not to vote yes to approve the contract after it's been ratified by the union. What are the steps? Because I've never been here, never had this happen, and she informed me that they would file against the commission for prohibitive practice because the contract has been ratified by the union. And so they feel both parties negotiating in good faith, so I just wanted to pass that on to you. That's what -- one other piece that she told me is that it would bring -- they would file against you. What that means, I don't know. It could mean money. I don't know. I don't understand because I've never been there. So I just asked her what would it be? Would we go back to the table? Would we go to empath and go to arbitration? And she said, no, we would file against the commission.
Okay, thank you.
So I just wanted to let you know that that was brought up by her.
Mr. Baldwin?
Yeah, it was mentioned that there would be a wage increase. Is that increase a flat amount across the board? Is it a percentage?
It is a percentage.
And the percentage, please?
The 18 -- sorry, 48 for. The wages are Grant County Sheriff's Office employees will receive 3 percent raise commencing within 30 days effective date of the agreement. All other employees will receive 2 percent raise commencing within 30 days effective agreement. Grant County Sheriff's Office employees will receive 1 and 1/2 percent raise commencing the first pay period following January 1st, 2014. All other employees will receive 1/2 percent raise commencing the first pay period following January 1st, 2014. And then the Grant County Sheriff's Office employees will receive cost of living adjustment at a rate of 1 and 1/2 percent commencing the first pay period following July 1st, 2014. All other employees will receive cost of living adjustment at a rate of 1 percent commencing the first day following July 1st, 2014. And to be eligible for the cost of living increase, you have to be employed by Grant County for 24 consecutive months prior to that date.
All right, thank you. If you commissioners vote for this, I hope that you are giving your employees the same percent of increase that you are giving the county employees from county funds, from my tax money. In other words, don't be too generous with the county if you're not being generous to your employees. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Yes. Please state your name for the record.
Hello. Hello, my name is Albert Davalos. I'm the vice president of -- yeah, it's okay. I can talk loud. I'm the vice president of ASME. I'm the vice president of ASME. This was a very difficult decision, this contract. This was my first contract that I've ever sat on a negotiation team, actually. I learned a lot. I want to say, first of all, thank you for taking the time as an administration. John did a fantastic job, as Abby did and the sheriff. But I learned a lot when it came to simple economics and numbers. I'm up here with, with a very heavy heart because right now our union is going through some issues when it comes to who believes their self-worth versus importance versus duties and who needs and deserves more money. I, I do want to tell you this, first of all, when we started with these negotiations, our numbers were very high, as were Mr. Sarri's numbers. We never went in with a low-ball number trying to say that anybody was worth less than what they are. That was not our intention at all. But PERA is getting raised and he made it very clear and very evident at the amount of money it would take. And he also showed us the numbers that he's paying to give us the one-hundred percent I'm here and I want to let you guys know respectfully that Manny has done a fantastic job. He and I haven't always seen eye to eye, as most of the employees in the Sheriff's Department can tell you that. I stand my ground as he does, too. I believe that as the vice president for him, I'm here to support him as my president, but I'm also here to support my union members as a devil's advocate and in between, between the president, the board, and them. This is about Grant County and the community, first of all, about the job that we can do as people and as a community, men and women, together. Everybody wants more money. Everybody has the outcome and the decision that we deserve more money. And then it comes down to the simple fact is, do we pay people money to work harder or should they work harder out of ethics? Well, I think because of the economic growth that we've had in this country, that's not even a factor anymore. Things are expensive. Food went higher, gas rates are higher. They do. And do I think my job is any more dangerous than a road department, a maintenance, or a truck driver's job? I don't. Because it's a risk to walk out of your home every day. But the fact of the matter is, are my requirements as a police officer a little more stringent and strict? Yes, they are. We didn't come in here thinking we're going to only take care of law enforcement first. You've got to remember something. Detention has the exact same risk that we take when it comes to their job and duties, but they have it in inherently different way. But what we looked at is the numbers, the numbers across the board throughout the state in fairness. Our detention officers, as good a job as they do, they are paid very high. They're probably, and I don't want to be off on my numbers, within the top three of the state of New Mexico. We pay our employees of detention very well. Luna County's starting wage, when I was there, was ten dollars an hour. I mean, just to give you an idea, road department, maintenance, janitorial, mechanics, they're paid extremely well also in comparison. But here's the problem that we saw as a union head. We've got certain employees that have been here twenty years that are making seventeen, eighteen, nineteen dollars an hour. Then we've got employees that have been here fifteen years that are making fifteen dollars an hour. Too much of a gap. And the biggest reason that happened is because of a cross-the-board wage increase. That's the biggest reason. Everybody always got five percent and there was no norm and no cutoff and no area to show you. We've got people leaving the detention center, going to maintenance, making more money as a maintenance officer with weekends off and no shift work. No job is more important than the job we do as a human being, being ethical, moral, and standing fair and loyal and honest. Every other job is just that. If we don't like it, we can simply get out of it, train ourselves, and go to a different position in this world. But when it comes to the job of negotiating, I don't know if anybody's prepared for that. That is a hard thing to do. No one's ever happy. Prior to this meeting, to ratify, ratify this contract, for ratification, we did have a meeting where we decided as a unionship, and you've got to remember, with all due respect, Manny posts on a monthly basis, at least a week, sometimes we've had to do it within a three-day notice, that we're going to have a meeting. We have antagonizers and instigators in our unionship, as you guys do in your county. That's a part of life. It happens in a uniformed environment in the military. It happens in our community, our citizens. My wife says I'm an antagonizer. I'm sure, you know? It's everywhere. But the one thing that we tried to do is we tried to explain ourselves and why we were doing this. Motions were carried, motions were made, that we separate the negotiations. Although we had one unionship and one president and one vice president, as well as our council, it seems that very few people came to that meeting, when we made that decision, versus the ones that came now. And I won't point fingers because I'm not even looking behind me, but I guarantee about two percent of the people out there, and this is with not any sort of anger, showed up. We have a gentleman who was there at the meeting, and I will call Chebby. He sat there through everything, never once gave a concern. He used to sit in our council and council eighteen. He never said a word. Instead, he went back to the board and told all these good men and women how undermined we were and how despicable we were and to start making calls while they're working to jeopardize their on-the-job. We're supposed to work. We're not allowed to conduct union business while on work. And this man's been in the union over twenty years. And I ask you this, if there was such a problem that he had at that point, why would he not bring it up? Lynn Baca had a problem. She brought it up and we addressed the problem that moment and we kept ongoing. Individual votes were made and created through each division because that was what was agreed on. I wish, and I am the same, I've missed union meetings. So when I get up there, I can't complain to Manny about what they said, what was done. I wish every month we had a meeting, everybody would show up. But life comes. You've got kids, you've got games, you have vacations, you have other things that involve you that might be greater than the greater good of the unionship. And I think Jody's doing a fantastic job. She was asked to be a shop steward last year with no experience, just like we were, and she's done a really good job. She's asked and she's learned. But again, we've only been doing this for a very short time as well. We're not perfect. We're just trying to get what we agreed on prior to this actual meeting. It's a ratified meeting. We agreed on it. We agreed prior to this last meeting that we had in July that we would separate. And let me tell you why we separated. Because there are different needs for different departments. Road department, as it might seem so minute, probably need more work and personal protection gear versus white collar, who has different office needs, versus detention and law enforcement who have different needs and requirements. That's all we did with our intention. And we're trying to keep it fair. You know, we have officers here who are making ten dollars less as captains and lieutenants than patrolmen do in the city, yet their requirements are just the same, if not greater, the liability they ensue. I have a captain who is making what, less than a sergeant in the city. And that's not the sheriff's fault or your fault. It's just the way times are. It's economically what has happened to us. You know, I've been a police officer for eighteen years and I have gentlemen that are working in different positions in the county that are making more than I am, yet my requirements are still greater to keep my certification. All we were trying to do was even it out, get the balance and put it back where we believed we should. Yeah, I chose this job, but I didn't choose this job saying I'm only going to take one call, two calls, or three calls a week. I chose this job knowing that I'm going to stay out whether it's one call, fifteen calls, or sixty calls. And that's prob, probably the biggest problem we have here is we have mechanics who are angry because they've got to do more work now. And I know that you would give them more money if you could, but where do you get it from when the nation's in distress, when we just don't have the money? So our intentions to ratify this contract were nothing but honorable. They were as fair as I believed we ever have been. Would I do it again? You know, I, I probably wouldn't. But I think I would because of the experience I'm learning now. I, we can't please everyone, as you guys know. There's always going to be someone there. But it doesn't mean that they're bad people because they want more. It just means that they might not understand and, maybe we didn't explain properly. I don't know, but nothing was ever intentional. We weren't trying to be difficult when it came to this. But I guarantee you this, it was a legitimate meeting that we had prior to this that agreed for separation and the meeting to ratify this contract was as legal within our guidelines as well as ethical. Everybody had an opportunity to stay, but we felt it would have been better to present individual, as we agreed on, because the needs were different. Again, I just ask that you please respect the membership and allow us to adhere to our own dirty laundry in a private manner. That's all I ask. I ask that you ratify and accept this contract. It is illegal.
I'd like to ask you a couple of questions, if you don't mind.
Yes, sir.
Okay, as vice president of the Local twenty-five sixteen, that's what you are, right?
Yes, sir.
Are you elected by the entire body?
Yes, sir, I am.
Of the, of the members present, I assume? Okay. So you're elected by the entire body. And you feel as though the ratification vote was legal? There was, there's no improprieties in your mind whatsoever?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do you feel it was fair?
Explain your question, if you may. Fair as in how much money we got from the county or fair as in?
I'm just talking about, about how I understand how the vote was separated and some people got to hear all of it and some people didn't get to hear all of it.
I believe it was fair. They were given an opportunity to stay and hear the whole thing. But prior to the ratification, we had a maintenance employee as well as road department employees who agreed to separate.
One more question?
Yes, sir.
I know that my fellow commissioner over here is on the edge of his seat.
Yes, sir.
He's inching up on me every time I talk. When I asked about the negotiation team, how on earth did a union of this size pick three sheriff's department officers to be on the negotiation team? I mean, that's a fair question, guys.
That is a very fair question. That's a fair, because it looks biased, question. And, and I will actually infer to our president for that because I was not supposed to be on the team. And I'll explain this part and walk off respectfully. I wasn't supposed to be on this team. There was someone else from road department, two people who pulled out at the last minute. But like I said, I'll let Manny talk about that portion of it respectfully because I don't want to overstep and say something I don't know.
That's fine. If you don't feel like answering that question, I don't have a problem with that.
He'd be better qualified, but I'll answer yours and then Manny could come answer the other one for you.
That was a good question. That was one of my questions. But what percentage of your union members did vote?
Number-wise, we'd have to get down and get, how many do we have showed? Do we have the sign-on list? Thirty-one, thirty-nine?
Forty-one.
Forty-one. So forty-one members out of, how many members do we have that are now?
Eighty.
Eighty. So we're looking at about forty percent, fifty percent that showed up. That actually showed up to the meeting.
That's very disappointing.
It's very disappointing.
The only thing I have is, this little fifty percent voted. What kind of notice was given for those employees, two or ten? Could you explain that to us?
Yes. They've known for the last two weeks prior to the actual meeting that we're going to have an emergency fast meeting because of, because of the budget.
How would they know that?
Verbally, I spoke to all the shop stewards, Manny spoke to all the shop stewards, and I know that we, all that's up for me. I stood in communication with detention. I told maintenance and road department probably about five days prior to the actual meeting, verbally.
So you talked to the shop stewards?
I, I talked to also employees, shop stewards and employees. Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Being that you have so many people that are pulling in different ways, was it ever thought of maybe having another election, another ratification?
We did, and I brought that up. And that's where I say Manny and I don't always get along. But this time, we actually agreed on it together. We can sit there and we can vote as many times as we can. The road department has a certain amount of following that they have. Sheriff's Department has a certain amount of following that comes to the meetings as detention. The unfortunate part of it is law enforcement holds a majority vote in this union. We have the most employees who are union members as well as detention. We could sit here fifty times a night, but the bottom line is, and this is just my opinion and correct me if I'm wrong, it's a democracy. You could look at legislation, sometimes you only have two people above the vote. That doesn't necessarily make everybody happy. It just means that's the way the vote went. As the county commission respectfully does and the county managers and directors and department heads, trying new things is always something to try to make things go as fast as possible and as beneficial as possible. If you ask me, we go for a vote and say, what do you guys want? The first thing everybody's going to say is what? Money. Money, 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 money. Five percent, ten percent. I had a, I had a deputy who was very hard up and wanted eighteen percent regardless. I mean, I'm like, okay, so do I, but let's get out of this land and let's come to reality. Eighteen percent for hundreds of employees is a lot of money. Probably have to do some layoffs if you want to get that kind of money. It wasn't just their department that is, a department that really felt like we let them down. I feel like I let them down, but at the same token, I'm trying to be diplomatic and listen to what Mr. Sarri had to say, which made sense. Money is an issue for everyone, who's self-worth, who's worth more, who's worth less. I, I don't know, you know? Will anybody ever be truly happy? No, the answer is not. Regardless of the amount of votes that we have, the amount of votes that are out there. But we always take everything into consideration as we're here for the people. We are here for them, for the unionship. But we're also here to negotiate in good faith and to do realistic things that are there. Should we be having maintenance employees making eighteen dollars an hour? That's for you guys to answer, not for me. But I know what was told, that we can do what we can't do, and those are why we wondered, should we have another vote? Another vote? The vote will never go the same. It'll continuously always be a different vote because that's the outcome.
Do you think the outcome would be a little different because the facts are given now than facts being held back during the meetings?
The facts were given during the meetings, but the unfortunate part about it is most men and women in this country have personalities that are different from each another. We can never be the same, we can never agree. It's the interpretation of the facts how a person gets it. You know, we've got a gentleman down there who does a fantastic job, and has he been overlooked? I don't know. I can't answer that. You know, I, I really can't. But what I can answer you is that if you compare his pay wage to the rest of the state, he's paid very well. If you look at the comparison on an equal basis, our mechanics are paid what big-sized communities like Las Cruces and Do ñ ana are paid. Our detention staff are paid better than entry level for Do ñ ana Sheriff's Department. And their cost of living, regardless of housing or not, is extremely greater. It's a numbers game. It simply is that. Everybody wants more money. I wish they could have it. I do. You know, I know almost all my agency, as well as fellow law enforcement officers, wish they could have it as well. What were the factors that determined more money versus less money? Well, I tried to explain it, they didn't want to hear it. I tried to explain it before ratification, they didn't want to hear it. And why did Manny not come see them? Because Manny's been working graveyard for the last two months. Today, he's got to go firearms and graveyard again. These are the things that law enforcement officers do for this community that aren't looked at. I've been in at seven this morning. I'll probably get out at five or six tonight because of things I have to do work-wise. Am I being compensated? Yes, I am. Did I choose this field? Yes, I am. But did I choose working eighteen hours, sixteen hours, fifteen hours straight in a row? No. Those are the things that came into play when we decided compensation-wise and wage-wise. Can I walk into a bar tomorrow and just have a drink and not worry about the consequence? No. State statute prohibits it, moral torpitude, ethical bylaws, the sheriff prohibits it. There are things that prohibit us from being like the regular community. Does that make us better? It does not make us better, but it makes our lives very difficult, very, very difficult. Can we get second jobs in outside employment? No. We can't. Regardless if somebody has it, they can't. This is it. Our job is courts, work, courts, work, courts, work. These are the things that we consider during the, the function of it. I don't consider myself better than anybody. I mean, I've got probably more skeletons or just about as much than anybody in this name, nation or room. But the numbers game. It's always a numbers game.
Whenever we make decisions, we use our conscience.
Yes.
And with our conscience comes ethics. Okay? You can choose to be ethical, you can choose to be non-ethical. And my biggest question is, did everyone know the percentages that they were going to be getting if the, if the contract was ratified? And I hope I'm not out of line.
And what, to add to that? To add to that?
Could you speak up, Lee?
To add to that, the, the percentages the other people were gonna get.
They only knew the percentage that they were gonna get prior to them leaving.
Thank you.
That's the honest answer.
So that division didn't, the first division didn't know what the second and third were getting and the second division didn't know what the...
No, they did not. The only thing I can say is they were asked and they were told that they can stay.
They were what?
They were asked and told that they could stay if they'd like, but once they did their vote, but no. We did not go over numbers prior to the ratification of each separate entity.
They were not barred.
Oh, they were not barred. No, they were not.
They could've stayed.
Yes.
And then taking their vote.
Yes.
I mean, I, I would, in a perfect world, I think you'd have a hundred percent turnout to your ratification vote.
Yeah.
And that would've been great.
It would've.
I, I was expecting to hear ninety percent or eighty-five percent when, when I asked you that question.
It's a sad number, isn't it?
It's very sad. Especially when it deals with, you know, money's income.
Lives.
But I, I would also, would like to have you all reconsider having another vote if information was given after the fact that could've made them vote differently before. That's, I'm giving you my opinion, I'm not giving you the commissioner's opinion, which they might feel the same way, but when, when I received so many calls, I was very, very weary about what was going on. And the first thing I always asked myself, was it ethical? Hopefully it was. And again, I'm not here to tell you how to run your union because to me, a union is family and, and, and union families stick together.
Yes.
And, uh, but I would really like to see some kind of a new election come out of the, the membership. Of course, that's not my decision.
No, and I understand that. And you know, Manny and I discussed that also. But I want, I want to remind you one thing respectfully. The maintenance and road department division pulled out of negotiations. They were there. They had an opportunity. But I'll defer that back to Manny. They, I wasn't on the board. They were on the board at the last minute, again. They pulled out for whatever reasons they had to. They had the opportunity to be there for the numbers game. They had the opportunity to sit there and defend their viewpoint as I did. You know, as an investigator, we lost out in investigations also. And let me tell you, I took slack for it like you wouldn't believe. But it's a give or take and it's a reasonableness. Was I willing to understand the point of the sheriff and the commissioners? Yes, I was. Did I like the answer? No, of course not. Everybody wants extra money, but, and, and I understand that, and I can't answer that. Only one that could answer that would be Manny as a president. He would be the only person that could answer that request that you're recommending right now. But I do want to say is they had an opportunity to be there, they were present at meetings, they chose not to be on the union arbitration board. But you'd have to hear from him why, I don't know.
Yeah, I just want to input a little is for the low turnout. When I worked out the mines, I was a member of steelworkers for the simple fact is my family would be safe when I went to work at night and my car wouldn't get keyed in the parking lot and I never attended a union meeting or voted on a contract, but I paid dues every month. So you have that around here in a lot of ways. I'm not saying that's how ASME is, I'm just saying that's how it was for me. I didn't vote. I, I took whatever contract came to me as a union represented position. So it's unfortunate and that's the way the unions a lot of times are, is a lot of people just don't show up. They don't take the time to go and vote. And it is sad because it is, means their life. And when I look back at it now, I probably should've been more active, but I wasn't. And talking with the, one of the things that has been brought up by Mr. Lavalos is the majority of our employees are in public safety and the majority of the employees in the municipalities and counties are in public safety. And so one thing that they've talked about looking at is trying to separate public safety away from the rest because you carry, when you look at Grant County, the road department has nineteen employees, the detention center thirty, the sheriffs thirty-four, clerks have two, treasurers are three positions that are represented, assessors are six. And so the majority is public safety, detention center and the sheriffs. It's sixty-four votes. So even if you had a hundred percent of the employees turn out, you have sixty-four votes in public safety that the employees can never overturn unless everybody shows up sick from the public safety group for the vote day. And, and that's one thing that they've talked about is trying to, as we go into before next year's, or next time we negotiate, is trying to get those two separated so that the blue collar, white collar workers have more of a voice and the sheriff's office. Because they have different needs. They totally, some of the things we negotiate don't make sense for regular employees because it deals directly with the sheriff's office and some don't make sense to the sheriff's office. And so it would just try and clean it up for both. Because I think if you even had another vote, the numbers show that the majority is public safety.
And that's fifty percent of the other group that show up.
Exactly, yeah. But that's, that's the issue you run up against and, and, and we've talked about that is that it's, it's an overwhelming, it used to be controlled by the road department. When I first got here, the road department held the president. Since I've gotten here, the president has been with the sheriff's office. It was Sheriff Inoaeva first, before he was sheriff.
I think the bottom line is for this commission and mostly for myself, it's, it's just really tough to come up here when, when, and, and have to vote in a certain direction to save the county pair's money if, if we were actually sued by, by the, by the, by the union. And it really is up to the membership to vote in a contract. And I think that's what's kind of hard for me is being that I was, used to be a union member myself and, and if, if I ever felt that I was being taken to the other side or, or, or didn't understand something, we always brought it up in our meetings and, and things really got, got done for, for the membership. And I just have a little, that awful weary feeling about this, uh, this, uh, contract that we're going to approve today. Being that there's so many concerned members, although it is your union. Your union chooses to do whatever it does. We're just here to, to actually approve a contract that's brought to us, that's actually approved by your union. So that's really what's been tough for us, or for me anyways. I don't want to keep going in circles here, but this is, this has been a really tough decision.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
My name is Manuel Maldonado. I'm the union president for local twenty-five sixteen, Grant County. And, uh, as far as our negotiations, uh, we had separate meetings. Before we started negotiations, we had one union meeting and we had sheriff's department, we had, you know, blue collar, white collar, and we had a detention center, which is also part of the public safety. So we had one meeting and one of the things that was brought up by, by, uh, some of the members from public safety was that we get more, more of a pay increase. So, um, there was a motion by one of our blue collar, there was a second. And the motion was carried, everybody agreed on it. So we also decided that we would have separate meetings with each division to see what the needs were, what, what we could do for each department. So, uh, my first meetings were with the road department, um, or blue collar. And, uh, you know, we went over everything that they were asking for. One thing that was brought up from everybody is that we were looking at wages, that was one of our priorities. But another thing that was asked, uh, what was more important, insurance or wages? Of course, the majority of all our union members wanted the insurance. So, um, so after having my meeting with the detention, or with the road department, uh, they, they also voted two people from their division to sit on negotiations. And so when negotiations came up, uh, I never got a response from the person that was supposed to show up for negotiations. So that's why it was the three sheriffs.
Once again, what kind of notifications did that person receive? Did you phone call?
Oh, yeah, there was several phone calls, um, text messages. They never showed up. I had to do the same thing with detention center, notify them, hey, we're going into negotiations, this is a scheduled date. I will let you guys know when to come in for your section. And, uh, uh, which they did show up, but we never had anybody from blue collar. So...
Well, I was hoping to hear you say that, you know what, let's, let's go ahead and postpone this to our next meeting and you're gonna have a new election, but obviously that's not gonna happen. Thank you very much. I know it's, it's really a hard job to be a president of, of a union or, or any organization. So I applaud you for stepping up at least that portion. All righty, and you too, Mr. Lavalos.
I guess I'm just gonna ask my question one more, Manny, if you just, do you truly in your heart believe it was fair, how, how it was done, separated?
Yeah, when we had this meeting, um, before we even started, um, I explained to everybody that we were gonna do the contract in sections. It was gonna be a very long meeting. We had some members that brought their kids in, which, you know, that's fine, I understand. So they were advised, you know, if they had things to do, baseball, you know, anything like that, they could go. They have the right to stay there. They have the right to vote. But, uh, you know, we had people that left, I don't know, within maybe the first thirty minutes of the meeting, that just walked out because they, they just had things to do. You know, so, um, you know, the meetings, we, we post them up. Everybody knows they have the right to be at the meeting. They were told verbally, you know, you guys can stay here for the whole thing. If you guys have things to do, go ahead. You know, you can leave. I'm not gonna hold you guys to, to staying. So that was their choice.
I'd just like to give my perspective to the employees. The fraternity which I was a member of and I'm a life member, uh, me and another guy started that. And traveled throughout the country as a, as a union. The beginning of ASME was started in my home, Art Sierra and I. So I understand unions and I understand meetings and I understand participation. And I understand later people yelling foul. Participation is very important. My suggestion is this, is that if in fact the form that you have now of your organization does not work, go back, put it together for next negotiation. But you can't come to the table and then to this commission and say, you know what, we didn't like what happened because we didn't participate. It doesn't work that way. So, uh, it sounds like to me, if in fact I was on the road department, I'd want a separation. Because I can never get what I wanted because of the, because of the detention's thirty and SO's thirty-four. And if you don't like that form, change it. But don't come later and say foul. It doesn't work that way.
Thank you. Anything else? Thanks Manny, appreciate it. Is there any other discussion today? Yes, sir, come on up.
Yes, my name is Robert Miana, I work for the Grand County Road Department. I'm not disputing anybody's job or anything, but the only thing that I'm saying that we are, regardless of red, white or blue collar, we're all under the same union, we're all brotherhood. And we have a situation here that the road department and, and the other, uh, uh, places are getting one percent on the COLA. COLA should go through straight with everybody. We're getting one percent, the sheriff department getting a, a point and a half, which is not fair to me. If they're gonna get a point and a half, it should be fair to everybody. COLA goes through everybody here. The raids, we're gonna get two percent, they're gonna get a four percent, well, that's whatever. But the ums here because of the COLA. And that should be going straight across. Thank you.
Would the COLA cost us if we got straight across versus what we're doing now?
Well, if you went down to one percent, it would cost less.
Of course, of course, yeah. I'm asking you numbers.
And I appreciate Robert making that comment. No.
It was negotiated by the union, though.
Yeah. A half a percent for all the employees. I would guess somewhere around eighty thousand dollars, I'm not sure. That's just a guess. I, I would have to go back and calculate. I mean, we don't have the salaries, I, I could calculate it for you, but that's something, I mean, right now it was, it was presented as a, the, the one and a half one. And...
So we're looking at this and we went ahead and approved the actual contract. Can we come together as a commission and go ahead and equalize it throughout?
January, we could do it.
In January?
Yeah, we could.
If the numbers are feasible and everything looks okay?
If the commission wished to do that, what I'd do is go to the union president and talk with him and, and the commission could do that if the revenues are there in January. This, the COLA doesn't actually take effect till July, till next budget. So you would have all the way till July, June thirtieth, or July thirty-first is when the final budget would be approved. And that's when COLA, the COLA takes effect in July first, two thousand fourteen, not January.
Couldn't the county give an across-the-board raise anytime they want without...
Yeah, the union contract binds the commission to a minimum. The commission could choose to give more of an increase to employees if they wish to, but the union contract sets a minimum rate at which we are bound to pay the employees. It does not set a maximum.
Because I am more for straight across the board type bills too. And, and I know you all did a great job with your negotiations and you all actually came together and actually met and did what the union wanted in most, most portions. So, I mean, I, I, I am more for straight across the board raises.
Straight across raises we used to give. This is the first time that we've negotiated in this type of manner. And we actually were supposed to negotiate earlier, but we postponed negotiations because the union president wanted to meet with all the employees of the different groups and talk with them. And then that's where this came out of, to him coming back to the table, is the information that was relayed to us. And so we actually were supposed to negotiate, I believe it was in April, and we postponed until when we had the negotiations here in July. And he was going back and I kept asking him, is he ready? And he said, I have a couple more groups to meet with. And would be his response when I asked prior to the dates we set. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor of agreement number eight thirteen nineteen, the bargaining unit contract with the American Federation of State and County and Municipal Employees Council eighteen, Local twenty-five sixteen, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. I'm gonna, I'm gonna qualify why I voted. The, the, I don't feel as though, I asked, I asked both of y'all if it was fair. I feel as though it was marginally fair. And I don't think you'll ever get to do that again. I don't think your members will ever allow it again. However, they did allow it. It was a legal binding, um, agreement and we have little, little latitude to change that. And I appreciate everybody coming, but I don't think that we have any way to fix this. Thank you very much.
Well, and I'd also like to make a comment that, I mean, this was a very tough decision. I hope we all learn from this. I hope this never happens again. And, uh, you know, most of all, I really want to avoid any type, type of litigation that's gonna cost our community any more monies for something that was already approved by the union.
But I would like for us to come back in January and look at that COLA.
Okay, next item on the agenda is approve or disapprove resolution number R thirteen fifty-three. This is an amendment to the county employee manual section six dot three, sick leave. This was based on union negotiations also. You or Abby gonna go over that?
Yes, sir, Mr. Sherman, I'll go over. As part of the union contract that was just approved by the commission, um, one of the items that Grant County had brought to the table is when an employee leaves our service, not for retirement, but they actually quit to take a job somewhere else. We currently pay them half of the sick leave they've accrued up to a thousand hours. This is one of the only places I've ever worked that does that. What that does, what my reasoning, um, going into that, what that does is it takes away from the rest of the employees that are here and dedicating years of service to Grant County because we're paying people to leave that are leaving us to go somewhere else. If they retire, we allow employees to exhaust a hundred percent of their sick leave. But as part of the negotiations, we asked the union to have back that half percent to people that quit our employment. That, um, because that's, like I said, I feel it's taking away from the rest of the employees, it takes away from the public, the services we're providing. When I left the university to come to the county, I had a lot of sick leave and the university doesn't pay you any. Every place I've ever worked, sick leave is, is basically something you give your employees, vacation is time they earn. And so we're basically paying people to leave. And so we negotiated that the employees that leave will no longer get paid half of their sick leave. If they retire, they'll still be eligible for one hundred percent of their sick leave for an early retirement. It's just the employees that quit. And so that's what this change is, is to change it in our employee manual to just strike out employees shall receive half the cash equivalent up to one thousand hours of accumulated sick leave upon separation. sick leave upon separation from employment, provided the employee is not terminated from employment and then leaves the employment in good standing. And this was part of our whole finance package that we presented to help offset the costs of raises.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion, we approve resolution number R dash thirteen dash fifty-three.
Second.
Motion is second to approve R thirteen fifty-three. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Only one thing left on the agenda.
So move.
There's a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.